Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the city council tonight on such a beautiful evening. This is our September, what is this, October 16th?
Yep.
He just got out of the home.
We're going to have a... They connive over there to see what they can do each time we meet.
We just said you got out of the home. That's what we said.
We didn't say that. He said it.
I've been out of the home all day.
Okay.
So I'm tired. I'm going back tonight.
Okay.
Before we start tonight, we're going to have an invocation given by our own Reverend Orr. Always great to have you, and we're going to have the pledge, and Debbie Montgomery will lead us.
Yes.
Let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Orr.
May we pray? Dear God, as we come before you in prayer at this moment, I think it's safe to say that everyone in this room would recognize you as our Creator. It's safe to say everyone in this room wants to live a full, healthy, prosperous life to enjoy the life you've given to us. Help us to recognize that you not only wish us to live individual, healthy lives, but that you call us to live together as a healthy, harmonious community. Father, for the mayor, for the elected officials before us, for those that will be elected next month, I pray that they will all strive to work together, to find common ground, to help to build the quality, the nature of life within our community. To this challenging end, we offer you this prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Orr.
Thank you. The first order of business will be the rook.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Shomel?
Present.
Councilman Nabi?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Silas?
Present.
The record shows that all seven council people are here. We have a forum, and we can do business. Second order of business will be the reading of the minutes of the September 21st, 2015 Dominc council meeting.
I move to accept the minutes as they've been presented to us.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the minutes as they were presented to the council. Are there any additions or corrections? Done the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. On the new business tonight, we have Resolution 2015-41, 2015-42. The first one is into telephone, a reimbursement from the police department. Each month we get a reimbursement because the police pay a portion if they upgrade their phone. Likewise, we have a reimbursement in the... We have Signal, if you remember, that was knocked down eight, 10 months ago. We were in front of the post office, and we got the check to pay for that Signal, $9,048. That's coming back to the city. You all remember, it was icy, and they knocked that thing down, almost hit the post office with it. I'd like to take those two together if we could.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I may accept Resolutions 2015-41 and 42.
How second?
Motion in a second that we accept Resolutions 2015-41 and 42, both receiving money back into the city. Are there any discussions? Any discussion? None at all. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and we're done with that. Next one's not quite as easy. Okay, tonight is the night that we present the 2016 budget. Clerk Treasurer has worked hard. The department heads have worked with her, and it was taken to the Finance Committee. Julie and I met with the Finance Committee last week. They gave us some things they wanted done. We changed it again. I will remind you that the budget might be lowered, but it cannot be raised by this council. So with that, I would like to start a public hearing on the proposed budget for 2016. We're open to a public hearing, and I'm going to present it to you first before we start talking about it. The total budget, the total budget is $12,742,180. You've had this in your hands since Friday. We are actually down $374,163 from last year. The general fund budget is $8,799,626. That's the money we get from the property tax. You have that, plus all the other things that we get that are mandated and that are for certain things. You have that, $12,742,180. If you go over the entire budget, it is about $10,147, less than $1 million than the budget I got when I took office in 2008. Now, I'll remind you, we still have police. We still have fire. We still collect the trash. We do yard waste. We do recycling. Tom runs the transfer station. We have our parks, recreation. We haven't cut one service, that I know of, to the city. We've sharpened them up a little bit, but we haven't cut them. At the same time, as Daryl said in the paper this week, we've been able to revitalize most all the buildings that the city owns. We've done it through grants. We've done it through our own people doing the work. There's a new roof on this building. There's a new roof on the city garage. There's a new roof in the administration building at the park. There's a new roof on the park changing house. We remodeled the park changing house. We rebuilt the 4-H building, or Roberts building. The amphitheater.
Pavilion.
Pavilion. All that has been done with either grants or money that we've been able to get from the riverboat. And I think we're going to leave the new administration with about $180,000 of riverboat, somebody...
Yeah.
$180?
Actually, right now, there's $192,000 in there.
$192,000. It was about $180,000 when I took office, so we're going to leave about the same amount of money. And I think, and Julie thinks, the good news is, we will leave $400,000 to $500,000 in tax money, 2015 tax money, plus the draw that we'll get in December, usually get it around 23rd, 21st, long in there, which should be 2.5, 2.3. Okay. Might be able to leave the new administration with $3 million. Sounds good, but when it costs $600,000 twice a month, it goes pretty fast. This is kind of a synopsis of where the budget is tonight. They've had it. I'm looking for comments from a public hearing from you folks. Anybody need to comment on the budget? Insurance cost included in that? Yes.
Yes.
What are your insurance costs run a year for the whole city? You got it quickly. That's an interesting story, because rent power has gone down, but our insurance has not up.
I don't think it did.
You got it?
Probably $3 million. It's... It used to be budgeted all in one budget, and when I took over as Clerk Treasurer, I thought it gave a better view of what it actually costs to run a department if those things were each included in each separate budget. So it's, it's probably at least $2.5 to $3 million for health insurance.
What is it? We gave it to you in Malibu. What did we give you, just for insurance?
Looking it up.
Two...
About 2.6, I thought.
I have to figure if I don't have this total insurance.
$440,000.
Now, that was the difference.
What number you wanting?
We want the insurance proposed for 2016. That's the number that it was in 2008.
Okay. $2,235,910 in general fund.
For just for general fund.
Okay. And then the other insurance that is union insurance comes from the two unions.
Well, that's not... Park has insurance and MVH. It's probably 2.4, maybe. $2.5.
Is that a general liability and workman's comp?
No, that's just health insurance.
Just health insurance.
The liability and workman's comp insurance isn't even that high. That's, it's maybe $250,000 a year.
What kind of deductible on health insurance do you have?
Different. We have like three different plans. The utilities is covered from their union insurance. We have one insurance that covers police, fire, and all the non-contract people through the IAC Health Trust. You can have your choice of a high deductible health savings account, which has a $2,500 deductible, or a regular PPO account with a $500,000. But those things are also in the police and fire contract. They're a negotiated item, so we have to stay with that. We offered the health savings as kind of an incentive to try and get people to go towards that in hopes of saving some money. We even put some money in their health savings account to try to entice them. I think the first year we had four people, and one of them was me, so... And another one was one of the girls in my office. Last year, I think we were up to about 10. So slowly, people are understanding. That's probably the wave of the future. That's what we're going to have to do. But then the street department, transfer station, park, EMS, they all have their union insurance. And actually, I don't think you even have a deductible, do you, Tom?
No, and Brian, if you don't mind, Julie.
Go ahead.
To help the mayor, Julie, when you ask for a definite cost, it's difficult. We're not being evasive. As Julie said, where I'm working, and we get our insurance through our, through our union, our, our cost to the city is $1,467 a month.
Per family?
Per person.
Yeah, and that's for, for family. What the IAC insurance for the police, fire, city, I think theirs is $2235 per month. So as he says, like close to $2.5 million. But it's hard to say this is what the insurance costs. The utilities, they, they get their insurance through the utility union. I think it's $1,100, Brad, a month?
I just looked at that. I can't remember. I think it's a little more. It's $1,300.
It's, it's close to what yours is.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
But each individual group has their insurance tied to their group. It's not a fine item in the budget. It's tied to that group.
And that's why.
And so we've got so much for fire, so much for police, so much for park, so much. That's why you can't tell what the total cost. But it's around 2.6 million to pay it. Reason why I ask is that insurance costs and building costs are usually the two most biggest factors you have in any government or business.
Health insurance and payroll costs. Ours is all tied up. I think probably in the general fund, 70, 70% of our cost are personnel.
And you must remember, all of those insurance costs are contractual. You can't change them until you change the contract. And over the years, we have changed the contract somewhat. It used to be that everybody was on this big insurance, and we took that off and put it on Tom's insurance, on the union insurance, and this union insurance. And now we have police, fire, non-contractuals.
That's it.
That's all we have.
The retirees.
Retirees.
But what they used to pay, a dollar a year, and the deductible was $100. When I came here 12 years ago, $100 per person.
And the employees paid nothing. They paid 10% of their insurance premium. Now, each employee pays 10%.
We've tried to take baby steps to heading in that direction, but it's tough to get across. It's tough to get that done.
But even with our insurance costs going from $440,000 up to 2.6 million, we still reduced the budget by $10,000 less than $1 million. Now, that's a big jump. $460,000 or 2.2?
That was what the difference was, even with reduced personnel. We... That was the difference.
We've run eight years with insurance just climbing crazy. You know, everybody knows that. It's just, it's out of sight. That's why I asked about insurance, because I knew the cost was skyrocketing.
But it's not property and liability.
While we're in this public hearing, let me, let me go over some of these things, some of these cuts. Just for this year alone, in the Clerk Treasurer's office, we've cut $36,407. Most of that, she's doing with one employee less, going to go to a part-time employee instead of full-time. Election expense, we had $80,000 this year. We won't have it next year. The Miller Center Bond is down $2,000. Fringe benefits are down $33,000 in fire. Gasoline's down $3,000 in fire. Medical exams, we had to increase that because every other year, the medical exams jump. They're, they're a real big medical exam, and then it's a small medical exam. Next year is the year for the big ones, so we had to appropriate $5,580 into that. Longevity in the police department is down by $1,700. Specialty pay is down $5,100. Insurance is down by $32,000. Gasoline is down by $7,000. Based on what we did '15, we based these figures. The park, employees are down $30,000. Fringe benefits down $15,000. Gas and oil down $4,000. Property liability insurance plus $2,000. It's in the park loan. You have a lot of liability up there. You have a lot of people playing and sports. Okay. The mayor's office down $10,000. Legal down $8,000. First aid, holiday pay is up $22,000. Longevity is up $1,950. Social Security is up $1,900. Fringe is down $8,000. Gasoline is down $1,000. DOT, other employees, down $5,000. Longevity down $915. Fringe benefits down $4,000. MVH, other employees, $15,000. That's down. Fringe benefits down $3,000. Paving of streets plus $25,000. We put more in there. We need more paving of streets. We put all that we're allowed to put in there. And it, it usually comes out someplace around $192,000. Those are just some of the samples where we, we were able to cut because our employees have quit using as much gasoline. They've tried to save. They've tried to do everything they can, but still operate. And most of this is because we put the financial emergency in place on March the 5th of '14. Had we not, we wouldn't have made payable by Christmas of that year, maybe even earlier than that. But it's worked. It has worked. Now, it's not fun to live with. It's like when your wife says at home, "We can only eat out once a week, and we can go to movie every two weeks." Instead of, we used to go to the movie every week, and we used to eat out three nights a week. That's what the city's done. And our employees have had to take the brunt of it because they are the ones that receive the most money. It's all personnel. And if you take the general fund, police and fire, eat up the entire general fund.
Property tax.
Property tax, yes. Yeah. Everything else has to be financed through these other funds. So it's a, it's a really tight budget. The question I asked Julie many times, and if you took a, it said, Julie, there's a pretty lake out there. It's got pine trees all around. Paint a picture of it. She could come closer to painting that picture, because when you paint a picture of what's going to happen next year, you don't know. How many people will pay their taxes? How many people won't? How many people's property went down? How many people's property went up? How many people moved away and abandoned their property? How many are on the, on the commissioner's sale? You don't know. You just don't know. How many people are going to work here and pay employee tax here? You know, they got to live here. If they move to Greensburg, Greensburg gets it. So all those figures are like this. They're just moving. She could do better painting that picture of that pretty lake. Am I agreeing with you?
Yeah, but I couldn't paint a picture.
It is, it is a tough, tough thing because it's a moving target. And I want to tell you, I've been with her eight years, and she hasn't missed it far. We've worked at it and worked at it. And then every day, every week, we talk about spending, just little things. And I don't know, I probably shouldn't throw this out there, but I've been trying to get the carpet in the dining room of the Miller Center replaced. It's been in there since its inception. It's wore out. It's all white. It's fraying. It looks bad. That's where we take all of our gas and everything. I talked to her today, and how much you got, Julie? Well, I think I can scrape together $5,000. It won't quite do it. So then we try to look, could we transfer a little bit here or there from some other little fund we might have and try to get that done before we have all these Christmas parties and everybody's in there, so it looks nice. You know, it's a gorgeous building, and it's a shame to have worn out carpet in it. But we've painted that building twice since I've been here, inside, with our own employees. But I would like to carpet it. I may even come back to this wonderful city council here and say, "Could I have just a few dollars out of that
Riverboat?"
Riverboat fund to add to that five. I'm going to get some prices. I got to wait on the parks that pretend she's on vacation to... And Diana, they're good at colors, and they're good at all that stuff, you know? And see what price we can get. We'll take some quotes on it. But that's something needs to be done desperately. And but you hold here and you wait, you know? That's what you got to do. Questions? This is a public hearing. Questions for budget?
Does this glowing report apparently mean that the financial crisis for the city of Conraville is over? And if so, was it overstated originally?
I'll let the council answer that. I, I put it in because we knew where we were. We knew we were in trouble.
May I? May I start?
You go right ahead, sir.
Sir, if I may. This just didn't happen overnight, and I'm going to use my department for an example. Two and a half years ago, we, and I talked to the clerk, and we were looking at money. Well, our money's, each year, when your property taxes go down, that's less revenue we have. Two and a half years ago, we had a gentleman that was going to retire. I asked the, the clerk, and I asked the mayor, "Instead of replacing that gentleman that was going to retire with another full-time employee, let's go with a part-time." And we tried. We worked on it, and it was successful. And that saved our department approximately $47,000 a year. Also, and this is not about me, it just happened to work out that way. Two years ago, maybe three, I talked to the mayor and the Clerk Treasurer. I said, "Our waste costs are escalating, as they are everywhere." We had two 25-yard packers that run the streets five days a week. That took six people. Through the trade magazines that we look at and so forth, if we, if we purchased one automated truck, one person could, could accomplish all that. So we didn't lose any employees, but through attrition, we didn't have to hire any. And that was, again, you say a glowing report. That was thanks to the mayor and the Clerk Treasurer, when all of us in every department, David's done it, every department got in there and said, "What can we do to reduce our costs?" Or I can assure you, we'd probably be bankrupt.
So they think financially, we're going to be sober?
No.
I don't think it is.
They can take it off anytime they want to. If they, if the council decides we want to take it off, they could, they could take it off. All they have to do is by majority of...
The headline in the paper tomorrow will not be, "A financial crisis is over."
Absolutely not.
That's up to this council. They could take it off right tonight if they wanted to. I put it all...
I think it's a good question to be asked.
No. It, you know, it's nip and tuck every single day of the week. If you take the financial crisis off, will everybody go back to spending? I don't know. Why don't we just let the new administration decide what they want to do, and when they get a hold of this budget, see how tough it is? You know, you dip in the cookie jar every week. You younger people don't know about the cookie jar, but us old guys do. It's where mom hid the extra money. Other questions? That was a good question, and I, I think the councilman answered it. Well, Debbie, you, you've been in on this whole thing. Do you want the, the financial crisis lifted?
I don't think at this point it'd be a good thing. Our tax base isn't any larger than it was when we went into the financial emergency, and I think we're better off being very careful.
Dave?
Absolutely not. At this point, we don't know what the taxes will be, look like next year. It looks like a lot of assessed values have dropped, so if that drops, then that means taxes drop. And I don't see how we could possibly do it. We are very, very, very tight on this budget, so I don't think it's anywhere near possible.
Brad, you've been here the longest, probably, of anybody up here. What do you think?
Well, absolutely not. You can't. You're spending over $1 million a month next year if things stay the way they are. If you go back to not careful spending over time, I don't know where it's going to come from. You're spending already over a million a month, so...
You got a budget of $12 million, you know, and you're spending a million a month. It's pretty, you know, it's 12 months in a year. Dr. Weber?
No, I don't think we should. Everything, everybody said everything already. I think we're pretty lucky being where we are. I mean, it actually looks pretty good, kind of. Believe where it is.
Connie?
Well, I think the status quo is good. I think it's just like we all have it at home, just like you talked about going to the movie and going out to eat. Only, you know, we have a much smaller budget at home. So whether or not you agreed or disagreed with the financial emergency, I mean, that kind of budget, you know, you had to call it something. And I just think that the savings have proven effective, so keep going.
There's your answer to the financial emergency. Further questions on this budget before we give it to the city council to pass it or not pass it?
I like to be top. You miss me.
Oh, Ruby, I'm sorry. You know, you've got that white shirt on and the white wall, and I'm an old man. I just got out of the home this afternoon.
I think everybody has budgets. When you get out of your budget, you're going to be in bad shape. I am a budget person, and I don't buy anything unless it's on sale. And I think everybody's got to have a budget. When you have kids and a family, you've got to be on a budget. I see things, I may go back and look at it a couple of times, but say, "Well, don't need that one." So I think it's good. You have a budget. You have to have a budget.
On the financial emergency, is it sure that we should stay the course where we are, or do you think we should?
Yes. Until the new administration, maybe they'll find money. I don't know. Do you think we ought to stay where we're at?
Well, if they find money, I want them to get me, because I'm going to kill her. Because we've looked, haven't we? We've looked every place. We've tried everything. The grant writer is writing grants that you would not believe, and just try it. But the grants are also drying up. Is it Marion that gave the checks out last... Marion or?
Yes.
Gave, gave the checks out last week to their employees?
They were on vacation for several days.
They told them not to cash them.
So they could borrow money or transfer money.
Where was it?
At Marion.
I have friends that are mayors all over the state of Indiana. They're either borrowing money. They're laying people off. Couple cities in Michigan sold their police cars, sold their fire trucks. They're buying everything private. Cities can go broke, and they'll send an administrator in here to run the city. It'll make a difference about what the city council or the mayor says. You can go broke, and it can happen overnight. It's something you've got to watch daily. You've got to, believe me. It's, it's just like owning a business. You've just got to watch it constantly. For a nice group of people that are very educated, you're asking very few questions. And those two girls of yours got the prettiest eyes, I'm telling you. And the last time I said there was a pretty girl in the congregation, that paper wrote me up. But I want to tell you, those two girls have the prettiest eyes, don't they?
They got pretty long.
They're Chad Franks' kids. Yeah, I'm glad they don't look like you.
You talked about cutting. Have you ever looked at ways to create?
Create more money?
Yes.
Absolutely. The only way you can do it, the, the tax caps are constitutional. Can't be changed. I have talked to this council many times in private and publicly about a public safety tax. The only problem with that is you've got to keep the two taxes you have in order to put the public safety tax on. If we could drop... If we could drop MOET, which is put on there to lower property tax, we don't need it because the cap's lower property tax. And then we can add the safety tax. You'd be paying the same as you are today, which is 2.45, I think, isn't it?
2.67.
2.67. Okay. So say you add another 1.5 on there. People in Congress will be paying 4% on their, on their income, just a city tax, where you already got your state tax and your federal tax. This council, I have asked every one of them, have I not?
Yes.
How many times have I asked you?
Twice.
Do you want to consider the public safety tax?
You want to ask me again?
Absolutely not.
Huh? You want to ask me again?
Do you want to consider?
No.
Do you?
Absolutely not.
Because it's just adding another tax.
Well, you may even misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm not seeing creative tax. It'd be the last thing that I think we need, all they need to do right now.
It'd be the last thing that I think we need, all they need to do right now. I'm saying create revenue for it. There's ways... I mean, if we talk to insurance companies to be able to see if there's, you know, safety procedures that we can actually follow, maybe we'd be able to bring our health insurance down. Is there...
We actually have engaged in those this year. We got people doing all kinds of testing to try to lower our rates, to get more healthy people. We're into that, big time. We're into it.
Is there a safety program for our workers in the city that might be able to lower the...
Absolutely.
The insurance company...
Absolutely.
I'm just asking some questions too.
Yeah. Our workman's comp insurance insists on that.
Is there a city-owned property that is not doing us any good at all? I mean, we've talked about, and I do not want to get on the subject really again, but we talked about the dead alley pretty much over by the nickel plate trail. And we went to the homeowners to be able to try to see if they would want to buy those land...
I talked to the city council about that, and that was not something they wanted to do. Right? Did I not talk to you about that?
We were talking about giving it away, not selling it.
Well, I don't think anybody up here's gonna buy it.
No.
Do you?
But that's what he was asking, if anybody wanted to buy it.
If somebody... If each person wanted to be able to buy it at a lower rate, at least it puts it on the property tax. That's some of the things. I've spent a lot of time on the GIS website going through and all the city of Connersville own property. And there's a lot of small segments here and there.
We've sold a good many of those. We have. We have sold a good many. Tried to. And there again, it's very difficult to sell a piece of city property because of the way the state makes you sell it. You gotta get two appraisals. You have to take the average of the two appraisals. Then you advertise in the paper for two weeks, and then you take bids on those properties. If it don't bring the average of the appraisals, you gotta redo it one more time. Or then you can finally sell it. Everybody knows what the appraisal is, because everything's done in public, which it has to be. That's transparency. So what do they do? They're gonna pay the lowest price. We've got some, I don't know, I can't name them right off, but we've sold some properties. We got out from under the Frazee Center. We made a permanent lease with the police department. They handle all that. We had an expense up there, probably, what? Fifty thousand a year? Maintenance and paying heat, lots of... We got rid of that, because they're using it, and they ran it. And they're running it through their union, their FOP. That helped us some. You know, there's been suggestions by some of our employees that we close the pool. We don't have a pool in the summertime. There's been suggestions we close our parks. Nobody wants to do that kind of stuff, you know? You've got to. I want to tell you something. This budget is doable. If you watch your Ps and Qs, this budget is doable. You agree with me?
I do. I think so.
But you gotta stay right to the tune. And the biggest problem that the new administration's gonna have is you've got five contracts to negotiate. Those contracts, they haven't had salary increases, most of them, for eight years. You've been on negotiating. Where are you gonna go? You have nothing to give. If you give anything at all, you're gonna be out of money. So...
I wanna... I've heard about the exit audit when you and Julie leave office.
Let me explain that to you.
What is that?
There will be no exit audit when Julie and I leave office. I don't know where that came from. In 2016, there will be an audit of the city of Connersville, because we used federal money on the Grand Avenue project. Now, at that time, they could call Julie and I in for an exit conference. But there is no such thing as gonna be an exit audit this year. You know why? Because the state don't have any money to do an audit. And we have had, what would you say, six audits in eight years? Seven?
We used to have one every year. If you get so much grant money, over, I think it's 500,000 a year now, then you're automatically, you're a federal audit, and they have to come in and audit you. We have not been a federal audit since 2012.
What's the expense for each audit?
Uh, it's not much. It's a state board of accounts provides it. Now, as I understand it, that cost has gone up. They've like tripled their charges on that. But I actually contacted state board of accounts by phone and by email earlier this year and requested an audit, since they haven't audited our books for 13 or 14. And they said, "I'm sorry, we can't guarantee." I said, "I'm leaving office. I would really like to know my books are audited and everything's good." Said, "I know we'll be in audit for 15 because of our federal grant money." And they said, "We're shorthanded too." And they said, "Unless there's some red flags there, we won't be... Probably won't make it in." And, you know, we're into October, and it probably takes them three to four months to do an audit. So I'm not expecting to see them before I leave office.
As corollary to my question, I guess there's gonna be no big shocking surprise for the new administration, as far as...
Oh, I don't think so. I don't see why there would be.
Okay, let's move on.
We have had every audit that her and I have been together has been a perfect audit. Hasn't it not?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you go on the internet and read them. They're there. But there will be, and they'll audit 15, because we used all that federal money up there.
Actually, that's not what's caused the federal audit. It's the airport money.
So that'll be done early in 16 sometime? Is that what you're thinking?
Anytime.
Sometime in 16. Sometime in 16. I would say at least by late spring to early summer.
Further questions on the budget? Any appearing further questions on the budget? I'm gonna close the public hearing. I think we've had a good talk about this budget. I think everybody in this room kinda knows where we are. This council has really done their homework, because they know where we are. They've watched it. They get it two or three days ahead of the paper, and they've had it in their hands, and they see it. You know, it's that thick. Every dime that is gonna be spent is in there. None appearing? Nobody else? None appearing? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing, and I'm gonna open this up to the city council for a decision. City council, it's all yours.
Your honor?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to thank Fran Schomel and Gabe Knobby and Julie for working so hard on this. And I have noticed on this, and they were great questions on our financial crisis and so forth, each department, they made massive cuts along overtime. And I commend them for that. Each department, Dave, I'm not picking on Dave, but Dave was working extremely shorthanded, extremely shorthanded. And many times that him and Dennis have came in and worked, because we didn't have the people. This council, not... This council, this mayor, this clerk treasurer, we're not trying to be difficult with the community. It's just if you don't have the money, you can't spend it. And getting back to our budget, I think it's a good budget, and I know it's a workable budget, 'cause it has to be. Thank you.
Counselor, your... It's yours, whatever you wanna do.
Mr. Mayor? I move to accept the 2016 budget as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the 2016 budget for the city of Connersville. Further discussion? I presume that through the public hearing, you pretty much got your questions answered. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Knobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
You pass that on first reading. That's as far as we go tonight. Two weeks from tonight, you got the date, what is it? I can't see the...
Nineteen.
Nineteen. We will consider it on third and final reading. Thank you so much. I'd like to turn now to salary ordinances. We have D and E. Those are salary ordinances that are pending for the transfer station. I'd like to take those first, so that Tom can abstain if he'd like. They're right there. The salary ordinance is basically just like it was last year. I'll take a motion on that, unless you want to discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending ordinance 3209 and 3210.
Second.
Motion in a second that we accept pending ordinance 3209 and 3210 on first reading. Any discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
If I may. This salary ordinance, as he said, this is the part where I work at, and there are no increases. None. Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Knobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
You have voted six yeses after those two ordinances be passed on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider them on third and final reading?
Second.
Motion in a second. We suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3209 and 3210 on third and final reading. Any discussion? None appearing? On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? We can move forward.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we consider pending ordinance 3209, 3210 on third and final reading. These are salary ordinances for the transfer station. Discussion? On appearing, roll call vote.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Knobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Yes.
You're jumping the gun.
She's excited.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Six yeses. You pass it on third and final reading. That's a done deal. Now, if it's your will, we could go all the way down to the Q.
P.
All the way down to P, inclusive with P, and pass all these salary ordinances at one time, or do you want to take one at a time?
Fran? What do you want?
There are no changes from a year ago.
No changes.
Would you like a motion on it, your honor? Would you like a motion regarding...
Yes, I think that we should at least have a vote if we're gonna consider all of the...
Yeah, as there's no changes, I would like to make a motion. We pass pending ordinance 3211 through 3221.
That's it.
Second.
Motion in a second. We consider all those ordinance.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am. You can always say so.
All of the non-contractual, any salaried employees, just if you're looking, if you compare these salary ordinances to 2015, there will be 27 pays in 2016 because of the way the dates fall. So it appears that everybody's getting paid less money. They're actually getting the same salary within the calendar year, but there are 27 pays as opposed to the normal 26 that we usually have.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinances 3211 to 3221 on first reading. Ready for the question?
Yes.
Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilman Knobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider those ordinances on third and final reading? So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules, so we can consider pending ordinances 3221 to 32... Excuse me, 3211 to 3221 inclusive, on third and final reading, on suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can move forward.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. We consider pending ordinance 3211 to 3221 inclusive, on third and final reading after suspension of rules. Is there any discussion? None appearing? Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Knobby?
Yes.
We have passed pending ordinances on the salary ordinances. We'll go down to Q now. This is an ordinance, put a handicap space in front of a doctor's office...
No, it's a church.
Excuse me, in front of a church. It's on 27th Street, where the church is on the corner. And if you're going up Grand Avenue and you turn right on 27th, there's three spaces on the north side of the street. They wanna put a handicap space on the far east space. They wanna put a handicap space on the far east space. It's right by their front doors. It's been approved by the police chief. We don't have to have a doctor slip on it, but you need to approve it. There isn't a handicap space anywhere around that church.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept pending ordinance 3222.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion in a second to pass pending ordinance 3222, putting a handicap space on 27th and Street just off of Grand Avenue. I think we'll just, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third reading?
Second.
A motion in a second.
We consider pending ordinance 3222, putting a handicap parking place on 27th Street just off of Grand. Suspension rules only. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You may move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second that we consider pending ordinance 3222 on third and final reading, placing a handicap parking place on 27th Street on the north side for this church. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Old business. Is there anybody having any business up here tonight? Okay. Ms. Laney's business. Start with you, Ruby. You got anything? Ms. Laney, she wanna bring the council tonight?
No, I asked Dave to do a couple things for me and he took care of that. Appreciate that.
Mr. Creach?
Good, thank you.
I enjoyed groundbreaking this afternoon.
Yeah. Tell us about that. That was, some of these people might not have been able to go.
It was the groundbreaking on the new apartments, the senior apartments. And it was very nice. There was a nice crowd there and...
The sun was hot.
Yes, it was.
Gabe, you have anything for us?
No, I was just gonna echo about the groundbreaking. I thought it was very well attended. It was a good event and I'm really excited to see what, what this has in store for us because I think that this is the first piece of many that might come and I'm really excited to see what might happen.
Well, you know, there's already talk about maybe that ballpark might grow up with the other ballparks in the sports complex and maybe that could be redeveloped into a beautiful park and walking place over there. Just talk, nothing for sure. They're anxious to do it. Steve Alexander came down to my office after the groundbreaking. I'm gonna, when I, when we did the bicentennial, the bicentennial committee made me promise that I would commemorate the bicentennial, the centennial, and the sesquicentennial in some way. So, they had a committee and Mr. Parker has got wonderful talents when it comes to art. I don't know how many know that he designed the memorial at the 911 in New York for Batesville He was back and forth to New York and worked with Mayor Giuliani and so he is, he's very gifted with art, if you've ever seen anything he does. In fact, in his early life, he used to paint vans and they were magnificent vans. All of you folks are too old to remember that. But anyway, I had him this summer, when he had spare time, to design those memorials for me and he got them all done. They're very beautiful. And tonight, while Mr. Alexander was here, he has the ability to get that thing put together for us. And so, he came down and met with me and we put that together. And I'm hoping that I get that done before I leave office. If I don't, I hope where I was elected, we'll finish it up. It'll go over there in that round thing. It'll be the history of our city with a picture of John Connor, possibly if we can afford it, a statue. This is all money that people in Connersville gave. No, no city money, all money gave, plus, I think maybe historic Connersville money. So, it'll also commemorate the lady that started the bicentennial, Mrs., help me.
Paulette Hayes.
Paulette Hayes. Her name is on there. And all through the whole thing, I promised him that when this was all over, we would commemorate those three because they've never been commemorated in any way. And so, anyway, Steve came over tonight and he's gonna work that together and see about putting it together for us.
Is there a ballpark where the apartments might be done?
Yeah, he told us today. Who remembers? He said August.
Eighteen months, I believe.
Huh?
Was it eighteen months?
Really?
Or was it sooner than that? I'm not sure.
Quicker than I thought it would be. Anybody remember the date he said in his speech?
He said eighteen months.
Yeah. They're starting tomorrow morning. Anyway, Mr. Alexander has plans for other things. He has gone out and looked at the school at Elkhorn. I think he looked at the school at Orange. He's looked at some other major buildings here in town to see if he could get financing to, to do some things for us. We need tennis courts desperately. Our tennis courts at the park are cracks that big. I have a little tar machine that I own myself and they've been trying to patch those cracks with that tar machine. But we really need those re, how many of you play tennis? They need those resurfaced up there real bad. And we need more of them and we need another pickleball court. And I told him all these things because he seems to be able to get, go get people to come in and finance them. Anything else on the Ms. Laney's case? I don't know. We got off on that.
I'm excited to see what's gonna happen.
Fran?
I just hope this is the first of any groundbreaking.
I do, too.
I was impressed with, with all the people that spoke, that are in charge, the construction supervisor and it seems like they know what they're doing.
Dr. Weber?
No, I think it's great, too. I was sad to see one of our restaurants closed. It's an unfortunate thing. Hope that doesn't happen again.
Maybe that's just temporary. Maybe somebody will be setting it over.
Well, I hope so because it was doing very well, I think. And I think it's needed and I hope next time it's handled different because we certainly don't want things like that to happen when there was really no need. It's, to me, it was sad. But besides that, are we still gonna hear a raise? A council raise at the end of the year?
You're gonna be raised right out of your seat.
I knew we didn't bring it up, but was I not supposed to?
No.
That was a brave comment.
That was brave. I had him here.
I thought, sure, he would ask when we're gonna enter his golf carts, but he didn't.
Diana's gonna do that if you'd like it, right?
Two months. Your hearing's off, Chris.
Every town around us has got golf carts and, and machines. You see them everywhere.
Good for them.
How about you?
I have nothing.
Should I call you Ms. Brown or should I call you? Why should I call you?
I'm not Ms. Brown.
What are you? I know you've got a new married name.
Oh, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna go by Durham.
Durham, eventually.
Yeah.
Does he?
But I'm still rich right now. Still in the ballot tomorrow.
Tony Rich Durham.
Larry the Home just called.
Yeah.
You know something I didn't hear?
That's because we got...
You got anything, Ms. Laney?
I don't.
John Baker, you got anything, Ms. Laney?
No, I don't. I want to say I enjoyed working with the redevelopment commission to get the work done that they got done. It was a pleasure and they did a lot of good work and should be commended.
The board works did something this afternoon that I was proud of. We have all the used oil that comes out of the trucks and the fire trucks and the police cars. And we've been selling it and getting very little money. It just keeps going down, down, down. They give you very little for it. And the commissioners asked if we would consider giving that oil to them because they now have a oil-fired furnace in their garage that uses old motor oil. You know, Connersville is in Fayette County and the home's in Fayette County. So, the board works decided today to give that oil to the county, help eat their building and kinda work together, maybe build a good relationship. So, they did that today. I was pleased with that. Clerk Treasurers report, you got anything?
Passed out copies of our monthly report. Anybody has any questions?
You got the letter in front of you? Fran, you got the letter? I gave it to you today. I was gonna, I had you read today. You got it?
That's a nice letter. Very nice letter.
Can I have, let me, let your friend read that.
That's a very nice letter.
Most of the letters that the mayor gets are not signed. They're telling us all the bad things that's going on out there, but nobody ever signs. But this little lady signed her letter and it's a lovely letter and...
Addressed to dear Mr. Mayor Leonard Urban, I am very proud of the program Star Development Incorporated. They have done stuff to my home I could never afford with the grant money. I live on a disability income. I have a new roof, central, new windows, central air conditioning, new windows throughout my house and a new furnace and several other things they fixed for me. This is a great program and I hope it stays and helps many more that needs the help like I did. Thank you, Virginia S. Griffin.
We started this program about 2006 or '07 and it's a program that you can apply for every year. It's a wonderful program. I wanted to read it. I'm glad the lady sent the letter because I hope the new people keep going with this program. We're able to repair, just like that, about thirty, maybe thirty-two houses a year with that money that we get. And Star Development is the grant writer and the people that get the grant from us out of Cambridge City, they're great to work for. They're wonderful. In all the years I've dealt with those people, we only had one property that the family wasn't happy with and we had to make some adjustments. But what a wonderful letter. That's why I asked Melissa to put it in here, Bob. Public forum. Anybody in the public wanna talk about something?
Is there a particular reason why the treasurer does not report on the amount of money every meeting?
She does. She just passes it out.
I don't do it every meeting. We just do it the first meeting of the month.
You wanna copy?
Well, it just, it occurs strange to me that you don't have open secretaries and attorneys to report as most organizations do. I guess that's a dumb question.
It's clerk treasurer's report. It's in writing. All these people have it and you can have it. It's a public record.
Right. Okay.
And then at the second meeting of the month, every department reports how much they've spent that month. Every department. Other things from public? Dan, you wanna say anything?
Well, I do. It, it came to my attention during the groundbreaking at the, at the senior building. A lot of people got recognized and got an applause, except one. Our mayor. You were unrecognized, in my opinion.
The sun was in my eyes.
Is that what it was?
And I just got out of the hole.
Well, I, I wanna go...
Yeah, you won the car.
I wanna go on the record for saying that I appreciate Leonard Urban and what he's done for the city of Connersville. And it's been, it's been a good eighteen months, these last eighteen months that I've had this job, working with Leonard Urban, shoulder to shoulder. It's been a good experience. And I know from working with Leonard Urban that his heart is in the right place for the city of Connersville. And I admire you for the criticism you've taken. Most folks would have said, "Give us more." So, my compliments to you and I'm sure there are others that feel the same way and I just wanted to express that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I ask for that, that whoever of the three candidates are elected mayor, that they will continue in the same tradition.
I'm sure they will. I think that everybody that's running for public office has one thing in mind, what's best for our city, what's best for our county. I'm confident of that. And I have promised all three that soon as the election's over, I'd be glad to work together to try to make a smooth transition. So, we got a lot of different projects going on and be sure that it all works out that way. I didn't have the privilege you have in that smooth transition and I know how onhandy it was. So, it'll work good. I'm, I'm thinking that those people that are running are, are good shape. And I've tried to support when anybody's come to my office and, "Can I see this? Can I see that? Can I have a copy of that?" We've given it out left and right. Melissa's made copies of everything. I think all three mayor candidates have the last year's budget. They've got what happened in the financial crisis. That's what we need to do in this country. We need to work together. We do, too. I was invited to the Senior Citizen Center the other night when you had your forum and I appreciate that, but I said, "That's no place for me. I'm not running." That's their time. They, they need to tell what they're gonna do. And you know, you don't get very many compliments. Most people wanna put you in a hole. They'll find out.
But they waiting out for it.
But Dave, you and I can have the room next to each other and we can argue politics all week. But I still like you, Mr. Bill.
So they find a cure for Parkinson's.
Yeah, my dad had it. Oh, took him back and forth about it. These guys probably wanna go see a bowl game or something. I can hear the envelope crunching. We done the public forum?
I just, reminder of the tulips. We are planting 10,000 tulips on Saturday. And it's for red ribbon wheat. They will bloom red because red is a red, awareness color. And in the spring, all of Park Road Central will have tulips.
So, if you can help with the tulips, where do they meet?
They're meeting at the big pavilion. It's hosted by the staff club as well as the head office. And everyone's welcome. We, we want all...
Free chili at lunch.
Yeah, free chili at lunch.
Sounds good. Okay. Anybody else under public forum? None appearing? I'll take a motion to re...
I was just thinking, I didn't wanna rattle my papers.
I heard you put them in your hand.
I moved that we adjourn.
Second.
I've got somebody's letter. Do you wanna keep this?
Yes, please.
Got a motion in a second that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We adjourn.[1771.71]